Missing S and something like that. I just see a good name.
Yeah, I didn't need, I didn't need that. I didn't know. They should have, they should have. I don't have.
So anyways, the, uh, the, um, my column before last, I mean, my last column this year. No byline. There's only one photo. Usually I put like five photos up.
I'll just tell you that it's what I find festival posting. And it goes down, whoa, something like, what in a week ago? And I asked him.
Why did we want another member this morning? I didn't, I, I was hoping he wasn't avoiding me because he, uh... Yeah. Because I mean, the column's free, so I don't see why you would.
No, no, no. No, it's not. I, I don't think it's anything to do with that. Oh, we lied?
Um, I'm not sure if I'm broadcasting, but, um... So everyone now knows about how.
All the people have watched it.
The website is...
You're there, you're on. It's all your face right now.
One person, okay.
Yeah, but if it's recording, then they can watch it later, right?
Take two.
Right?
That's right.
They can watch it later?
Yeah, absolutely.
Looks like we have three minutes if that clock is correct.
Okay.
Is that... We were out there. All right, um, well, the other issue is...
I'd like to watch some people having nothing around our, our garden.
Now, at the last meeting, somebody was talking at the back of the building, at the back, and I couldn't hear them at all. Just so you know.
Hello, everyone. Thank, thank you for coming. Well, it's four o'clock, so we'll start the meeting. Uh, nothing under assessors, correct? Uh, next would be through the minutes of the June 7th, 2021 meeting, um, just a couple little grammatical things that I caught. Um, for, on page two, near the top, the second sentence, I would just say Chairman Von Molder requested OHAC member. And going down, um, looks like we already got the T for agreed down at the end of that section. But right after that, the select floor discussed, um, take out the what and make it the future of the Owl said Grange Hall and take out the will be. And I, there was one other one I thought, but I didn't catch it again.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I had on the last page, Chris, the, it should be plural, the attendees were Jacob, Paul, Jason, and by the, and on, and on, and on. That's, that's all like, you know, just a few little things like that. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as intended.
And I will second that. And, uh, just to let everyone know that, um, Gordon is away due to a family matter. I'm putting it ten today. Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? To our passes. Thank you. Next item is a school update with, uh, the District 13, uh, our school board member Susan Thomas and business manager Peter Orne. And part of, this was kind of brought up by a resident who had some questions and was wondering, I guess, as that she put it, um, why that our school board member wasn't reporting regularly to us. So, uh, unfortunately, um, she is not here.
She is not.
So, um, I, I apologize for that. Um, she certainly knew, but, um, you're here and we'd be glad to hear her report.
Well, I would be happy to.
If you could, um, address the microphone, um, so that it, it will be picked up for the recording.
As I said, I would be happy to attend anytime you ask me. I know when your meetings are. Um, what would you like to know exactly?
Um, she had some comments about, uh, curriculum, which I felt were, um, Trump-based.
I, yeah, that's inappropriate if you're gonna start doing that. Let it all stop. I don't think it had anything to do with Trump. And there's been a lot of people in this country that are, are concerned about the critical race theory, theory. It's not just Trump people.
You are correct. And we are not teaching critical race theory as a curricula in our schools. There are many aspects of it that we do touch upon, as we should.
Okay, well, that was the one concern that she mentioned. Um, I don't recall any other.
Right, I, I think one of the things that concern people is what grade level this is being introduced, you know? If someone in first grade, set primary, whatever, is being led to believe that because they're white, they're automatically racist, which is what seems to be out there in people's minds.
Well, and, and that's really quite incorrect.
Well, that's...
You know, we don't, we do not have a curriculum that starts with kindergarten, teaching those two different things. In fact, we are very concerned with the emotional learning of our children. And we treat them with a great deal of respect, all of them. And we require that they teach, also respect their teachers. And they do. I mean, we've had a terrific year considering what we all went through. Our teachers and staff at RSU 13 gave 150%. And it was very well received. Uh, we're working very hard to keep it up. I happen to be on the curriculum committee. So we will be addressing this way. Actually, we've been addressing more important things like reading and mathematics.
Yes.
And we have wonderful programs now going. We tested a program during COVID. And it was a math program. And the test results, as we compared from the beginning of the year, dealing with pre-COVID, then COVID, and then after COVID this spring, they learned a lot more than we thought was possible. I mean, it was really exciting. Our curriculum director, who also happens to be the vice superintendent and a resident of Owl's Head, she was thrilled that something this exciting took place and it worked. We have a wonderful reading program that's going on. Because what we're trying to do in the district is we want every student in every school to be learning the same thing. No matter where they are, Cushing, Thomaston, South Thomaston, Ash Point, we want them all to have the same. And that's what we're working on very diligently. And the other thing we've been doing, of course, is working with our IT. And we've made some great strides with that. Uh, we're one of the few districts that all of our students had instruments. And we had hotspots for them. In fact, Pete knows, Remy, we, we did everything we could to make, could to make sure that every child was hooked up. So, yes, and it's wonderful. And a lot of it we'll continue to use because it's very useful. Uh, anything else?
We, well, we always have questions about the budget. Um, it, it seems like Owl's Head's share keeps going up, even though our student population, I'm told, is going down. So that doesn't make sense to a layperson.
Uh, it doesn't. Unfortunately for Owl's Head, we have a lot of very nice housing. And actually, I'm not sure how much our student population has gone down. I don't think it's very much, really. I do know that around me, there are three houses being built, and I know two of them altogether will have six kids coming into the system eventually. Uh, some of them are, were young, but so, uh, and we just, our housing stock is worth so much money that we don't get the help that the other towns do.
I have a question we've forgotten that, uh...
Yes.
When, when you say, I think it's 25% based on students, 75% valuation.
Yes.
That's right. Do they count all the students, no matter where they go? They go to private school, homeschool, or whatever? Or, or do they just take the ones that are in actual our school district?
Just those that come in here.
Yeah.
Those the subsidizable students that, that are...
Okay, so if someone says that the child took a Christian school or homeschooling it, they're not part of the package?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that was one of the questions I think someone had. And the other thing is, I think it was, our increase was $230,000 this year. And in order to keep our mail rate the same, we would need $20 million worth of increased value.
Well, hopefully it's gonna happen. There's a lot of building...
$20 million?
I don't know.
No.
But, but, um...
I mean, that's not Yarmouth, Yarmouth thing or whatever. I understand, but it's just...
The problem is, is how they evaluate and figure the, the cost.
Right.
What they don't take into consideration, as you all know, is income. And we're trying to change that.
Yeah.
We've been trying to change that for years. And we're working on it still.
Yeah, there was something in the Vanguard paper today, and I was...
Yes, 55%.
That's not gonna help us at all. That's not what, what I'm talking about. There was not...
Why won't it help us?
Because we don't get, I don't believe we get any.
Well, this is state funding of education. And I think, like I said at this last meeting, that we were actually last year, 54%. Is that correct?
Heard about.
Yeah, we read about 54% last year. So 55 is probably gonna help us a lot.
It doesn't, it doesn't help any community that doesn't get subsidy. So any community like Owl's Head that doesn't get any subsidy, it doesn't matter how much you fund it.
Right, so there you go, 55, the 54, it's not gonna help us at all.
And that's because the state, part of the state, Owl's Head's too rich.
Yep. Yes.
And they have, and they value, and because they thought they... What they use to test the wealth of a community is its valuation by itself. So communities that are on the coast, communities that are on the lakes, communities that have a large, like a single large employer, tend to be oversubs, tend to have overvaluations. And so it doesn't matter if your income is half of the state average or a quarter of a southern main town. Your valuation is how the si- state sees your ability to raise taxes.
Yeah, right.
That's unfortunate. And I think that, you know, something to remember also is there's two pieces of the, of the funding that comes from Owl's Head. One is the required amount that the state sets. And that's all student-based. That's all relative student-based. And that piece is based on residents, resident students. And that's how, that's how it's, it's distributed, you know, by town based on the percentage of resident students that are in the district. And then there's a local additional piece that goes over above that, that is a 25% students and 75% property value. And that's the piece that the five communities in the district can, can control if there's ever a need to change that. If there's ever, you know, a desire to change that percentage, if there's a more fair way of doing it, that's where change is gonna happen. In a state, we've been trying, I've personally tried in state for seven years now to try to get that changed because it's just, it's really unfair to the entire Knox County. There's, there's probably two communities in Knox Town that would not benefit from that.
Right, yeah.
Why don't they, why don't they look at the whole district instead of the individual towns when doing the subsidy?
Well, subsidy is a, it's a subsidy to the town. It's a subsidy to the community. It's a proxy, it's a property tax relief program. So really, it's, it uses the funding, the education formula that really is used to say, okay, uh, this town needs to, uh, come up with $10 million for its education because of our formula. But they can only afford eight, so we kick in the rest. That's how that works. And it's done at the town level. Actually, I think it's better actually done at the town level than the, than the RSC level. Uh, there are some formulas that they use, the RSC level, and that we, we actually don't get many of them. Sometimes they look at, if you have a very, you know, one community that, that needs a lot of subsidy, it throws off the rest. Uh, we don't, Owl's Head does not get any of the minimum subsidy for special education that every other town does, including St. George by itself, including Camden and Rockford, because they're both towns, and that's, that's okay subsidy. So there's an override for towns like that. But Owl's Head, because we're actually, Owl's Head doesn't, doesn't get that because the other towns have met that threshold of, of subsidy already as a district. It's, I call it, I mean, it's an merit tax is what I call it. It's a subsidy, it really is. And, and that's, those are things that, that we've been trying to get at least our representatives to understand that they exist. Because only then can you actually get legislation written that might change it. But, but it's really, it's a big problem here. And, and you're seeing, this, you're seeing that disproportionate increases in your, your, your required amount to go to education because of some of these things. You know, you might benefit from the state subsidy piece or the state portion one year, but you get it on the local, the other, the same year. Uh, and sometimes we have local decreases and the state required one goes up. It's, it's been a perfect storm for Owl's Head over the last, at least six years.
Yes.
Um, I've seen that, uh, while students might decrease one year over the next, it's the relative number of students. So if the entire district sees a decline, the Owl's Head decline might be less than the decline in the rest of the community. So it's your increase. So it's the relative amount, not the absolute.
Right.
Uh, you would think that the absolute amount would help us with our budget. Sometimes, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's discouraging, you know? Because we sprint every year when we're doing our budget. People get cost of living increases and that's it. You know, we cut back on this, cut back on that, and, and the school budget just explodes. And like you said, we need $20 million worth of increased value. We're not gonna get it. Now, to, to keep our mail rate the same, it's not gonna happen. And people are gonna be mad, but...
Well, I think the most important thing for every citizen of Owl's Head is to please contact your state representative. Now Valerie did put in a bill, it was killed, of course, but she has not given up. But everybody as an individual should contact them.
Yeah, uh, Bob, I should do, I should chair the committee. Um, the increases in RSU 13 over the past five years have been dramatically more than inflation, dramatic. So, uh, four years ago it was 5%. Three years ago it was 19 and a half percent. Last year it was 5.3%. And this year it looks like it's gonna be a 7 and a half percent increase. All tremendously more than inflation. And as I looked at the presentation that was done by RSU 13, uh, the administrative costs, system administration costs are going up almost 9%. The school administration costs are going up on the order of 8%. I mean, what, why are those things so much more than inflation?
So what you're talking about is the, is the tax impact, not, not the school budget overall. Uh, this year the school budget was up 3.9%. Last year the budget was up, uh, just about 2, 200% tax impact. This year was 3.2 overall. Tax impact last year was zero. The, um, I didn't look at the, is it numbers in those? But, but I know, I, I, you have to be...
Detroit from that chart.
Right. The budget increases, uh, for, for staff represents most of the increase this year. Because we have contracts with teachers, uh, that are, that are set. We have estimated contracts with our hourly staff that are, that are fairly set. We've budgeted a 4% increase, uh, for our salary and our, uh, hourly non-aligned, non-contract staff. That's what's in part of that. Uh, the, part of the assistant administration would be, uh, the interest on, on some of our loans. But I'm, I'm happy to sit with you and go over a detailed amount, you know, by article, uh, for your, for your committee. That would be helpful.
Yeah, well, I mean, what's, what's happened is the RSU has become a larger and larger percent of the overall town budget. And it doesn't show any sign of, oh, now. So, uh, you know, what, what has, for example, what has St. George managed to do now that they pulled out? Um, I looked at their, uh, school budget, and it's about 64% of their overall town budget. Ours, uh, last year was 75% of our budget. And then it went to 68%. And I don't know, we haven't finished the budget, so I don't know what it's gonna be this year. But it's, it certainly is gonna be below 68 because of the size of the increase. So St. George seems to be controlling. I don't know how the results are.
Well, it's, I mean, that's a, it's a, it's a discussion I don't like having because when you're teaching, when you're talking about a community's budget, you're, you're comparing two pieces of the budget. The, the community piece, the services that the community provides, and the school. The school was distributed relatively fairly by students, the number of students that each town has. Uh, you, you can't, I'm not sure what services St. George offers, or South Thomaston, or Owl's Head, or Rockland. In Rockland, the school budget represents much less of the total budget because of the services it provides. Sure. Cities have to do that, so I try to avoid those conversations. I mean, it's from a, from a county standpoint, I, I enjoy figuring out what, why, why it is that way. But to me, it's not a, it's not a fair representation to try to compare two towns that may be very dissimilar in a lot of other ways. Remember, please say, and maybe that's a cop-out, but it's, I think it's a hard conversation for me to have. I don't really understand the municipal side of, of it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, the, so I guess the bottom line for us with regards to this wealth discussion is our town forecloses on people every year who aren't able to pay their taxes. And it's a combination of two things. One is their income isn't very high. And the other is that their property taxes, because of being perhaps waterfront, even though they may be very elderly or whatever, the property taxes, of course, are high. So, you know, that's kind of a perfect storm, uh, which, you know, we do our best to deal with it.
I mean, it's, it's, it's the same in all of our communities, all of our communities. Because there are, there are these homesteads that are, and how, and, and people's families for generations. And evaluation doesn't mean you can cash it out and pay your taxes with it when you have no cash flow, my own income.
Right.
You know, with, I own part of a house that didn't, in and out of our family, South Thomaston, on the water for 130 years. And this, this, the value going up doesn't, doesn't help me. The taxes that go up hurts.
Sure.
Uh, in, in Rockland, you, you've seen, uh, the housing market is so much different than it was even 40 years ago when you would have families in these big houses. Now you have, if children have moved out, you have just the, the parents left, trying to afford a house, kind of fix income, that keeps going up and up in value. And it's the same everywhere. And, and when you don't, you know, you, I mean, the state doesn't consider the ability for a tax card to pay, not just the ability for the town to assess, it ignores the most important piece of, of the puzzle. And why it's forcing people out of their houses, to sell if they can or to be foreclosed on if they can.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Bill George, uh, first, thank you for providing this information. Uh, for me, it was, it was extremely helpful, you know, of, of framing your discussion. Um, and I'm new to this, so to try to, 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 I asked my stupid question.
And what I, what I think I heard you say, absent someone state putting in income, we're changing, adding income in versus valuation. We're stuck?
We're stuck.
And there's no other option. We are, you know, we have the, the options to be all right or represented, but otherwise, we're stuck. I just don't want...
We're, we're stuck right now. Until we come up with a, a better way of doing this, and I'm involved with, with education policymakers from around the country now, the program that I'm working with. The state, state funding formulas change about every 20 to 30 years because states get stuck.
All right.
And when we've gone, when I've gone to this state, the DOE, to talk about some of these ideas, using income, they like the idea, it's been talked about for a lot of years. It's in a report called the Pikes Report that they use that idea about the safety of study dog 15 years ago. Uh, the DOE doesn't like it because it's not that number. It's, it's the main revenue service is number, income. What they do like, and what would benefit Owl's Head, and any of our communities, is poverty rates. Because there, there are pockets of poverty, and, and we do, we have something called the free and reduced, free and reduced lunch rate. We have those numbers. We know that overall, our district, five towns, is about over 60% free and reduced poverty rate. Using that kind of factor, which is in the DOE's control, might be a way of introduce something that might be palatable.
All right.
The problem, the biggest problem is, is it's a zero-sum game. The, the, the state has $1.2 billion to put in education, and it's split it up one way or the other. So these communities like Yarmouth, Freeport, uh, some of the southern main communities that seem to have relatively lower valuations and much higher income, which is getting subsidy, there are, there are communities, you know, better communities of Portland, wealthy, wealthy communities, the average, your per capita income is in the 50s or 60s, that's getting more subsidized than Owl's Head. It, it doesn't make sense. But those towns would lose it, and they're gonna fight that tooth and nail to keep their subsidy in any kind of cage.
Understood. Well, thank you very much. Very, very useful.
It's frustrating, but I think it's...
All right. Do we have any more questions or decisions? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming.
I will say that any, anytime we'd like to have the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, uh, curriculum director, or me, please just put us down and we're, we're happy to...
Okay, I do see a hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, uh, one of the complaints that Marie had mentioned was that she was very frustrated trying to get to the school board meetings. Are you gonna be opening to the public again, or are you giving them clothes?
They'll be, they'll be open, they'll be in-person meetings starting, uh, at least. First meeting will be in August, but with this, with the, with the governor removing emergency, emergency declaration, we have 30 days more. So we, we have to go in person, 30 days, at the end of that. But we may still also try to have some, have interaction, and I think it seems to be a bit of a learn from this.
Okay. Again, no more questions? All right, thank you. We'll move on to our next item. Um, you don't have to stay if you don't want to. World Commissioner Bill Lutman, uh, two items. First is the quote from J.K. Kelly LLC on the, um, I believe this is the parking spaces near...
I believe this is the parking spaces near the park, State Park, correct? And you said that, um, the amount is twenty-six hundred and that the state is willing to pay half.
So our half is thirteen.
What's that?
That's the total, probably twenty-six, and our half is thirteen.
Yep.
And so I just got a message from today that they, uh, wanting more, a little more information on what, you know, the length was and the width was and what we're going to do. So I just wrote up something, sent it back to them today, but, you know, they've agreed to do it. So I don't know how soon it's going to get done and how you feel about it.
All right, um, have they agreed to it in writing?
No.
Let's see if we can get it in writing.
I mean, it says on here they agreed to pay half.
Yes.
And that's a good question. Are we going to pay the whole thing and then wait for the state to reimburse us? So is.
I guess that's what you have to decide.
Right, can he, you know, uh, Jimmy, Bill, Bill.
That's what I did. I talked to, I guess my name's Sunshine up there, the occupant. Yeah. So anyway, I believe it was either her or there was another guy I talked to, I don't know, McGusta. And they got, I think they won, we could bill it half and half.
Oh, good. That would work.
And I talked to Jimmy Kelly.
He's okay with that.
So should we do a motion approving our, our pass?
I think so, uh, we're kind of just had to figure out where we're going to, you know, take the funds from. There is.
It's part of my road budget.
Oh, okay, there is money. Oh, all right.
That actually got carried, you know, I know you hate that word, carryover.
Well, can we, can we pay for it upfront to get it in this fiscal year? I'm sure I could love that. Well, I mean, it gives our hammer away, but.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, yeah, we could do that. I mean.
Wait, you, you have a problem with that? I mean, there is money there.
But I would try and get the agreement in writing.
Yeah.
And then we can pay them or pay, pay for the project if we can do both before the August meeting or whenever. When's the year end? July first or?
Yes.
Two thirty.
There's only, there's only one, one more, there's only one more pay, uh, payment more. So we can write the check. We don't have to give it to him, you know, until, we can write the check so it comes out of this year's budget.
That's even better.
That's better, right, yeah.
We can do the counting.
And hang on to it and then if something goes, tear it up.
Excellent. All right, so would you like to make the motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, in J K Kellogg, uh, thirteen hundred dollars is our share of extending the parking area on the side, um, well, it's not Lucia Beach, I guess we have to call it Valley Hack Road, uh, for, for State Park.
And I'll second the motion. Any other discussion, um, just for future typing on your part, it's Kellogg with an A, K A, not K D.
Yeah. It's not catalog.
And the Valley Hack maybe spelled wrong. I think I was calling it a different one, but.
You've got, you've got, you've, you've got Lucia Beach on this invoice. He's got Lucia Beach on the invoice.
Oh, he does, okay. Well, we used to call it that.
I know.
Okay. All right, thank, uh, we'll vote now. Passes two oh. Next item is the paving issue at the general store slash post office.
And I talked to Doug Johnson, the owner of the store and Meyer, I guess the name of the, runs a, I mean, of, of the post office, Meyer owns the store. They're both well under, they were third, the third with us.
All right, and then we have a bid here, um, of a total of fourteen thousand eight hundred.
Yes.
So roughly five thousand would be our share.
I mean, there's some paving in there, you know, and when I talked to Doug Johnson, he just said, and she wants to pay her parking lot. And so when it, he wants to pay the front of the post office while we're all, you know, while it's all added, so, you know, we catch him. But we did damage, you know, and then they would overlay it with a surface or it's kind of all of one nice thing instead of a bunch of trenches. So, and we don't have to, originally I had it kind of sketched out, I would, we would cross the post office property in the corner, you know, because he owns right to the edge of the pavement of the town. And, uh, Fred Newkin wasn't comfortable with having us try to get a drainage easement across his property. So what I did, I stayed right out in the town right away and had to add one extra drain manhole so that you've come up the road with an, into a manhole and you'd have a stop bike and over to a catch basin on the shoulder. And that way we stay right in town right away, so there's no issues or, um.
Is this again something that can be in this year's, from this year's budget?
I've already had, uh, the artist, Pam, set aside today out of my budget.
Okay.
Five thousand.
All right.
I said I put six just to, you know, cover it and then whatever it is, but the thing is, how do, you know, same thing, are we going to do the job and then try to collect from the property owners or try to get them a write-up check upfront? I guess that would be our guys' decision on how you want.
I would say if they would at least do half upfront, if, uh, if not all, I mean, we can ask, I mean.
There again, is it, you have money in your budget that you haven't spent for this year? Or you're going to put it in next year's?
Well, it's whatever, Hall's can get to it now, you know what I mean?
Right, it sounds to me like maybe it should be in the budget back in July first. What do you think?
Well, you know, there's, you've got a surplus right now, as well as some of the, well, yeah, well, I'm saying surplus, I just haven't spent, you haven't spent. But we're going to spend it on Friday, maybe Thursday, we're going to pay the Valley Hack road.
Okay, then we'll put it in next year.
Put it in next year's budget. That way it'll give us time to find out from them how they, how they want to fund it.
I'm guarantee, I pretty much guarantee that if I call them tomorrow, they'll have a staff law.
Right, exactly, exactly. So it sounds like it perhaps should be put in the new budget.
Bill, did you have it?
I didn't bother putting it in the budget.
In the new budget.
Because I've already just had, had them set aside several thousand.
I mean, this year's budget.
I'll increase that by five thousand, the figure you put in.
Okay.
Instead of carrying it over.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Could, uh, Bill George, could our communities be put in writing so it's enforceable? Other than it could be oral, it was oral in the.
Right, I think just like with the state, you know, get it in writing, sign.
Yeah.
Should be signed.
I'm concerned with a, a parrot.
A parrot letter or something, both of, all three parties, I guess, the.
Or an individual letter for each of them.
Well, yeah, one for the store, one for the post office, and then also I could do one of the state, I guess, for the other road, what do you call it, Valley Hack.
Okay. All right, uh.
Good.
All those in favor? Oh, you, we have made the motion.
Well, we have, yeah, make the motion that we re-approved the, uh, project at the Alice Head Post Office, Alice Head General Store on Main Street, and our share is, would be five thousand dollars.
And with a request for the individuals to come up with half of their.
Right, and, and have something in writing that the, uh, other parties are committed to that amount.
There's, there's, okay. All right, um, any other discussion? All those in favor? Passes two oh. Um, while you're here, one other item I saw in the emails was something about a striping, um, Ash Point, and I thought the state did that.
Well, they do this road, but they don't do it from Dublin.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
So I haven't looked at it. I'll just download it right now, I guess I didn't look. It needs to be done this year or not. I try not to do it every year, but, uh, it does pay.
Yeah, uh, I, I see they're putting in new culverts. They were down by the fire station. Looks like they dropped one off by Mills.
Okay.
And then up by, um, what's her name beyond Tom, Wonder Christy, where that controversy was about that, that they're doing that, Bill?
I guess I haven't, haven't seen them, but I, there was a mistake, something, uh, some kind of a proposal. Their plan was for the, you know, local Knox County. And one of it was ditching and culvert work in Alice Head.
Yeah.
This, this fiscal year, uh, no. So I don't know, uh, in fact, I just called them on one right now because Bill Willis said that a week's rule, culvert is plugged as a state issue, so. I told the guy that if you're going to do ditching, that's one you can do, and if not, add it to your list. They never called me back, so I don't, I'll just leave a message.
Yeah.
I'd fly.
Yeah, because they've got running on the road, all the, you know, so sure guide, like from the village all the way, you know, almost to Rollers Hill, right in that, that area of ass.
Yeah, there is another culvert just beyond Tom Christie's
Yeah.
that crosses the road there, because I'm sure it's been there for fifty years. So that may be one that they're going to replace.
Yeah, because there was some controversy about, well, a year or so ago, there was some controversy about the drainage coming down when she built her house and,
Yeah.
and all that, so maybe that helped solve, that's still an ongoing problem.
In other words, that water was going to flow the direction of the culvert where, that's where their old culvert was, it drained north instead of south. You know, Tom swore it went the other way, but, uh, state came in and said, no, it wasn't designed to do that, which actually puts the water on his property, but, then again, when they put culvert in his house, it was there, so.
Yeah, right, and, well, maybe a bigger culvert, a huge, huge culvert.
Yeah, or, yeah, I'm sorry, probably.
Yeah.
We haven't heard from them lately, so hopefully.
Right, and well, there's no rain, you know, there's no rain coming down.
All right, all right, next item, thank you. Uh, next item is the permission to close the office at eleven AM on June thirtieth to close out the end of the year business. Um, I guess you made a motion for that.
Yeah, we've done this before because it is time consuming, giving it closed out, so you can open quickly. Let's see, it's on, what is it, on Wednesday, right? So that's good, so it gives them a day to, you know, before they have to reopen again on Friday mornings. We do this every year, so I'll make a motion that, uh, we close the office at eleven PM on June thirtieth so they can close out our fiscal year.
Eleven AM.
Eleven AM, yeah, 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 no, it could stay open till midnight.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? Dick, do you have something going on there? Uh, all those in favor? Passes two oh. Uh, schedule the town meeting. August thirtieth, I believe, is what we would normally do.
Right, yeah, um, well, there's five Mondays in August.
I think that almost always is, but.
Well, necessarily, yeah, no, I was just looking at, because we'll be meeting slightly, you know, the second and the sixteenth, so that should work out pretty well. The thirtieth, so I'll make the motion that we schedule our town meeting for August thirtieth. And we want it six, six PM.
At the town office, I guess.
I think that's given.
All right.
Downstairs community room.
I will second that. Any discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor? Passes two oh. So just for everyone's knowledge here, the warrants would have to be approved by, when would they have to go to the printer? I'm looking at you.
Um.
August seventeenth or?
I need to know by four PM, the sixteenth.
Sixty.
For them to go in the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
Right, plus we, we have the town report that has to get to the printer too, so we need everything in, I would say, yeah.
I'm working on that.
Right, by that first of that third week also, because I've been given, you know, a week and a half to pull it all together, does any changes or anything?
So when, when do we need to have the budget numbers done?
Well, that's, was my next question to you is when are, when are your budget meetings? Because I haven't gotten a schedule. Normally I go to at least one of them.
Yeah, I haven't had any yet, but I don't have all the data. I'm a fire department, there's a couple of things I don't have. It's coming in, but we're getting there.
I, I would try and get everything done by the end of July. I mean, that gives us a cushion.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe meet with us, you know, on July nineteenth, let's just say, it's a Monday. That still gives us time, you know, because we could go to the August second meeting, but it'd be good to have it, you know, in July when we can, and then could be some changes in the final vote, they, they'd be taking on August second.
Does that give me enough time for the book?
Yeah, August second is, you know, it's the first week in August. You still have, you know, three weeks, more than three weeks for the book, almost four. First Monday in August is August second.
And while we're discussing this, the next item, which is the annual town books dedication, we already have chosen that person, so we'll just proceed with that.
Okay, but who's going to do the write-up? Who does the write-up?
I don't know, we need a good picture too, but I think there might be one that's.
I'm not, I'm not sure who, all right, I, I do that, I work for the page, but, uh.
Last year we had K Dodge, K Dodge gave us a lot of the information for last year, but.
Right. Perhaps the person's spouse, maybe can, you know, I'll pull it together if you want, because I know, and, and a picture, but I think there might be one that we we could borrow from the Curry Gazette, that would be a good picture.
Okay.
Also along that line, um, the selectman letter?
That's what I said I'd probably be needing.
Okay.
Now, now that the.
The request is out now.
What I was, I was going to say is now that the interlocal agreement has been resolved, that now it can be written.
Okay.
Didn't want to do it before that. Any other new business? Old business, Christina Woodman, to discuss Ash Point Farms. I, I think it'd be better to be closer to the microphone than at the end of the row.
You have a traveling one.
Those always make me feel super awkward. I don't know about you. Uh, so thank you for having us. Uh, before the, uh, warrant gets too far developed, we just wanted to take an opportunity and show you what we're working with in terms of a potential amendment for this, uh, this use for a wedding or event venue, uh, on this property. And so what we did, and, and we've been to the planning board with this concept, but they, um, did not hold their last meeting. And so we haven't been back in front of them with the real language. So we're looking to do that, uh, but in, in concept, they were happy with this. Um, which is essentially to just take the same framework that's already there that, um, applies to certain properties that have over fifteen acres, a little bit broader range of activities that they can do in the agricultural zone. Um, so what they told us was, um, this is a good place to put it. They want to see a bunch of restrictions on, on how these events would operate in terms of noise, parking and things like that. Um, so what I did was I just looked at a, a bunch of, um, mass gathering ordinances and looked for common themes and put those common themes in here, um, like adequate water supply, adequate, um, trash disposal, make sure parking is on the site and doesn't cause any problems, uh, doesn't cause any nuisances to surrounding properties. Um, so this kind of expands on, there was already the ability, uh, in the ordinance to have um, really narrow kinds of events like armed table dinners. Um, and so we just took that same section and brought it, uh, to be a little bit more, um, general in terms of the type of events that could go on. But kept a lot of the same provisions that were already there about, um, you know, limiting, um, nuisances and noise and things like that.
Okay, so you said their, um, meeting wasn't held? Do you know when they meet next?
Uh, I believe they meet next on the twenty.
They're, they're having a, um, appeals meeting is on July seventh. Excuse me. Yes.
Because they're going to have to have a public hearing on this.
The, the, the Board of Appeals is holding a meeting July seventh. Um, and there has not been, Scott's on vacation July twelfth. So there has not been a planning board meeting scheduled as of yet. Um, they didn't receive this in time for the last meeting. So, um, Scott's here, if you'd like me to get him to find out if the planning board is holding a meeting.
Okay, I think we need to nail down the dates because we don't want to miss the August meeting if everything's sort of okay at this point.
Yeah, I've been asking the chair, um, he said he had an idea of a schedule, but he had just hung back to me, it's been.
Why don't you go ahead and get Scott while he's here? Thank you.
Well, they usually need on the second Wednesday, I think. If there's something on the agenda, then I think they have to meet.
It's the second and Monday.
On Mondays now?
July twelfth, it's what's on the. So let me just go check.
Well, they could change it.
So the, the planning board's public hearing could be the day before the, the town meeting? It doesn't have to be any certain amount of days beforehand?
I don't know of that.
I mean, it, it kinda hamstrings you that if something comes up at the public hearing and somebody wants to change the language, then you're kinda stuck with the language you have.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't really want us to approve the warrant if, um, the meeting, the public hearing hasn't been held yet.
Yeah, um, and, and you're looking to approve the warrant, it sounds like somewhere around the second.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's, you know, the budget, we don't really need, we're into warrant, we don't really need it on second of August.
Ten days or something, or seven.
Well, it has to be, obviously, it has to be posted before the town meeting, and in the public hearing, uh, you know, we have to advertise it, there's a timeframe for that too.
Yeah.
So we just have to make sure our dates work.
The public hearing, uh, gets posted or published twelve days before, that's the limit there. So as long as they have a meeting in July, we can make it work right now, but we need to know when.
Right, I, I, again, I, I'm pushing to have most, everything done in July so that we're not last minute, because I hate being forced to do something at the last minute.
Right.
We're looking for a possible date for the public hearing on the, um, Ashpoint Farms, uh, warrant article.
Public hearing, or you?
With planning board, planning board hearing.
Hopefully both.
Well, it has to go to the planning board first.
I don't think, yeah, you gotta go to the planning board first, we can have a public hearing.
Right.
The public hearing has to go to the newspaper, I don't think, in July, to cook the planning.
Right.
What we need is the submissions, at least ten, excuse me, ten copies of your submissions, along with an application for the planning, we need that by Monday at least.
Okay, but when is that meeting going to be held?
Uh, oh, no, okay, I don't know, it would be the second Monday.
July twelfth.
Okay, is there any way you guys could meet earlier than that, have a special meeting?
That would be up to the chair.
Alright, I would strongly suggest maybe you could pass it along to him, but you do have a special meeting, since you're not gonna be here on the twelfth, and that.
Oh, you had to say that.
It's already been said. But I don't want it to come up to the twelfth and say, oh, Scott's not here, so we can't do it till next month, so, um, a special meeting might be the way to go.
Like he raised his attention, but can't make up his mind.
No, I understand that.
I don't wanna be pushy, but I don't think you do have to have a, a planning board hearing before the public hearing. I mean, we could just advertise it as a public hearing.
That's a matter of what the town is, it's.
Plus, usually the, the planning board would say they favor it or they don't favor it.
Recommend or not recommend, due to the fact that it does, it is landings.
Yeah, I, I would think they'd do that after the public hearing, I mean, are you talking, when you say that's the tradition, it's probably more about applications than it is about zoning changes.
To get their agreement, I mean, after the fact, if they say we don't recommend it because something's misspelled, that just means you're gonna have to backtrack, nobody wants to.
So I, again, I think the best idea is to see if the planning board will have a special meeting.
I will go see if I can contact the House if you want.
And just explain that we're trying to get your, his meeting, his, his hearing, public hearing, all done in time, that it can be on the, uh, August town meeting warrant, which is, we're gonna meet on the thirtieth of August, the town meeting.
And does that give a lot of time to get printed and paid for?
If, if, if the public hearing is held in July, yes.
Or even if it's held in, in August, I mean, I don't, you know.
I'm trying to push these people.
I, I know, but I'm, I'm saying, I don't think the word in the, all the verbiage needs to be in the paper, it's just an announcement. There's a public hearing, we're getting this, so it's got nothing to do with Eleanor putting something in the paper, it's just putting the word in, I mean, you know, the notice in, it's not doing all of this.
Right.
It just has to be in there for two weeks.
Right.
Right, right.
We'll have this at the town office, anybody look at it once.
Right. Okay, yes.
But Eleanor will have to have it printed in the, in your report.
Right.
Oh, yes, definitely, but for the public hearing, you don't need all that verbiage in the paper, that's what I was getting at.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, there needs to be time to get that printed.
Right.
So that it should be done timely now.
Right, right, exactly, and do you go to all the planning board meetings?
When I have to, it seems to be all.
Yes, but I mean, it's not a requirement.
No, it's not a requirement.
I mean, you could submit written opinions, it's necessary, if you felt strongly about something one way or the other.
I think it's on the right track.
Do they have the material now? He was talking about ten.
I just now got my first copy, it's just heading back.
I know, but I mean, she, you were saying they wasn't in in time before, but do they have it now, the ten copies or whatever?
So we, we haven't done the ten copies.
Oh, okay.
Again, that's a, that applies to applications, this is kind of a different animal.
Right.
And I'd like to see those. I like to see those, like, Friday would be helpful for me, but Monday is.
Well, it's pretty simple, I mean, this is it, right? I don't really see the problem in getting it to them.
Alright.
Right, uh, what about, I, I just, the part of the reason to come in front of you two is, if you hated the language or hated where it was going, we don't wanna.
No.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's really not up to us so much as it's up to the planning board, so.
Well, you approve the warrant, so.
And it's ultimately up to the citizens in this town, not us or six people on the planning board.
Like, like the interlocal agreement, you know?
Right, they're.
We just presented it, we didn't really say we were in favor or against it, we were just saying this is what we've come up with, and, and then it's up to the town to make the decision, so.
Right, yeah, the only thing I would, I just wonder if the eleven PM thing is kind of, you know, accepted, maybe to be ten.
That's the perfect kind of thing that I think the public hearing would, would dredge up if people were concerned about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I wonder if we, if they could, you know, if you could change that, and we had, any processes over again.
No, I mean, the way, the way I advise towns is, unless it's a huge change that comes up after the public hearing, you don't have to renotice it.
Any other comments? I'm glad it's finally getting closer to being resolved.
Yes.
You.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, corrections to the sand and salt bids, um, do we have someone to explain what went wrong?
Uh, I think, um, when God made the motion, and I don't have my genosie, but I think he said Martin Salt Company instead of New England Salt Company. I think that was, that was basically what it was, we just.
Okay.
We mistook this or whatever, because Martin Salt is Martin, you know, everybody knows Martin Salt, and I think.
So do we need a, a new motion?
This needs to be a new motion, this name.
Okay.
And this needs to be a new motion with tonnage, the cubic yards, he said tons instead of cubic yards.
Oh, okay, alright, so, so that, no, that's, that's, that's this one.
I know, I know, I'm actually another thing.
She has one, she has a copy also.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, we amend the approval for the salt, and, uh, it should be for New England Salt Company.
I'll just give them out.
I highlighted it for you.
Yeah, yeah, five hundred tons.
Uh, I'll second that, any discussion? All those in favor, passes two oh, and then the, um.
I'll make a motion that, uh, bid for the sand is a thousand cubic yards.
And two?
Well, let me price, the price is the same as it was.
No, no, two, two, to which firm?
Oh, excuse me, yes, to D I flag and science.
Alright, I'll second that, any other discussion on that? All in favor, passes two oh, do you want to give me one copy back from me or not? Which, does it have to be signed or anything? Uh, any other old business? Yes, sir.
Um, anything happening with the, uh, motion around the sexton for the culvert?
Um, one of your budget proposals you received was for an assistant town manager or a part-time one, or something like that?
Well, I didn't know whether that was gonna be asked that next.
Well, my, my thought was, if we did go that way, that person should be the sexton as well.
Okay, so, do we budget for?
Um, that's a discussion to be had at the one of the budget here meetings, right?
The, the thing is, if, if we change, we can't just change and let's go to a town meeting in order to do that, so if we changed, it wouldn't be, you know, it would be later on, it's not gonna happen overnight, we'd have to vote on it at town meeting and make a decision on when that happens, if we do change or, you know, however we handle it for administrative assistance, we have to be careful of the verbiage of that, we can't call him a manager, you know, because we're not a town manager type of government, so we had to be careful with the verbiage. And Seth Thompson did this a few years ago, so I was gonna call Jan Verdeo and ask him how they, you know, proceeded with that, because it has to be worded just right.
My, other brief question, in which maybe I'll make an answer is, um, I believe that we always say that we have two and a half employees, is there any chance of having three employees?
What do you mean?
In other words, the half-person go to full-time?
Well, I think Pam has requested that her hours.
Four hours in her budget.
I mean, I don't know if that would solve the problem that's being presented or not.
No, I, I.
I think the problem is with the decision-making.
Right, I mean, it's like, every day the town office is open, we get emails regarding something that probably should be looked at.
Yeah.
I mean, that's almost every day, so I'm, I'm not against proceeding with that, but perhaps the money should be in the budget, and then if it gets voted down, then, you know, we don't, we don't spend it, but we have to find out the procedure for doing that first.
So I, 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 I agree with her, I lean towards, maybe we will end up including money in the budget for it, but, um, we do need to have a discussion as to exactly what we're looking for and what the duties might be.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's up to the budget committee to define that, so.
No, I, I'll talk with Seth Thompson and see, you know, I'm sure they have a job description for the person that's now, you know, they're administrative system, I think is what they're called.
Yeah, but.
And come up with something.
But I do like the idea of that person also being the sexton.
Could be, right, could, that could work.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what's a tremendous burden on this person in two different directions.
Why is it two different directions?
Because the sexton is, is, has to do with the cemetery, isn't it, there's tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. We could almost have a full-time sexton to get this down back, as far as the cemetery is concerned.
Okay, I thought, what I was hearing from them was more that this person would be more to be a contact person in, at when someone dies.
Well, that's true, but then there's a lot of, uh, cemeteries, there's a lot of space in the cemeteries which may be accounted for or may not, and that person as a sexton, that's one of the jobs to make sure the town knows what was in buried in their cemetery.
I mean, there were a lot of technical issues.
Yeah, yes, there is, that's, yes.
They were gonna come up with a sort of, some sort of job description, weren't they, I think?
Basically, I was asking was, did they do that?
Yeah.
No, I, I see, not, not yet, I.
Yeah, we hadn't heard anything, because they were gonna go to some of the other towns to see what, you know, what it, the duties were of a sexton in a town our size, you know, we don't need to include, probably ten and wherever.
So again, we've got about five weeks to work on. Any other old business?
Dick, I have a question, I wanted to inform, not only this selectman, but budget committee, that we have got our reinvestments, I wish you, uh, the one of them were, had been, uh.
Yeah, I saw that.
And, uh, it's renowned to, oh, I think ten thousand, they have a dollar, a more project to be done. And that's not a discussion for now, but I'll make sure that the budget committee gets some experience.
Okay, is that what remains for that additional dredging that we can't do at the moment?
Yeah, which, yes, uh, that's basically what it is. But it's more complicated than that, but I'm not gonna get into that now.
But at least the dollar amount isn't that much if.
That's right.
If it falls through from the federal part of it, okay. Any other adjustments in the meeting, old business, yes?
A, a couple of the big ticket items I'm still missing are, were the transfer stations that have.
That's Frank.
Do you have that in Frank's?
Transfer station.
No, transfer station, I'm sorry.
Stump, dump is Frank.
Yeah.
Right, transport station.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, God should have some information on that.
Each, each should be available tomorrow, I believe, if you wanna come.
Okay, and I'll let fire department and stuff like that.
Yeah, we gotta just tell Frank, but, you know.
I, I sent him a note today saying, hey, it's, and they say, you really need to be on this, so.
Right.
Well, maybe send a message, say that, um, if we don't hear from you, your budget will be the same as last year minus ten percent. That should, uh.
There you go. Good.
Wake him up.
Alright.
I like clear, I like clear guidance.
Yeah, that works.
Alright, um, any other business?
And the only guy I knew that was not on the agenda, did you get the email from Susan, Susan regarding, we have to put on the warrant, uh, something to do with the liquor license, this and whatever? It was very confusing, did you read any of those articles?
And basically, we've got to do what we did seven or ten years ago, whatever it is, do it again.
Yeah, but it was sort of confusing, because the one part it says, allow Sunday sales, and then another part it said excluding Sunday sales and whatever, so I think we need some clarification on that, to add it on.
My understanding was, um, the first couple were to approve the sales, and the second was to approve the sales on Sunday.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering if, if when this comes up at the town meeting, there's gonna be questions asked, because it started, it was given you in one article, oh, it's the same article, but four parts, then taken it away in the other, so I think we need some clarification on that. It's housekeeping, basically, it's housekeeping, but I'd like to understand it better.
Yeah, why don't we have that printed out, um, for the next board meeting?
And there's a contact number for the guy at the state, so.
I guess I wasn't, I guess I wasn't as confused reading it, maybe I didn't read it correctly.
It gives and it takes away, it seemed to, but I, like I said, it's probably, it's just housekeeping, but I'd like to understand it a little bit, but.
And Fred always goes over the warrants anyway before we print it, so. Public comments, any? Yes, again.
What's the way we're gonna find out what's happening with the interlocal agreement and an attempt to renegotiate it?
Um, I sincerely doubt that it's going to be on this August meeting. I kinda would lean towards maybe a year from August, um, I don't know if we need a special town meeting, but it just depends when something arrives from this ad hoc committee, and, um, at this point, I'm not feeling or hearing anything is imminent.
Ken, Ken is asked to be on the next meeting, so in July.
You're, you're back there, you, do you have any time?
No, uh, other than the fact that we have had another meeting, we do have, um, we do have a proposal that we're working on, and, um, we're just getting the wording and everything right before we had, you know, ended up with Jeremy, Jeremy and Dorothy, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanna make sure that it's, you know, that it's something that they can order, what their objections are, I mean, it's, I'm, we're earnestly trying to negotiate.
Yeah, the, the problem is, the commission is meeting the second Tuesday, so that next. Yeah, the, the problem is the commissioners meet the second Tuesday, so their next meeting is July 13. It's gotta go to the FAA, it's no sense to put something on a warrant. You know, so it looks like, you know, and that would mean it'd come back to them in August, which would be the 10th for the commissioners or whatever, so I'm not sure the timeframe would ever get on the, the, this town meeting.
I don't think that that's ever been a goal, but we were trying to rush to do that, I think we were trying to get it done correctly and hopefully get something that everybody can agree upon, that was the goal.
Right.
Right.
I think we agreed the last time we discussed it, that it wouldn't be, make this a town meeting.
I think that's a good idea, that it not be on the annual town meeting, we'll be here until the cows come home.
Dick, did you have something else? Okay, anything else before we take up the warrants? What is this that was stuck on top?
It's from the.
The auditors?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, some of them, or one or two of them will be here on Monday. You know, to make note of that, I had some questions for them, so I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to talk to one of these.
Um, we're here, we're here starting this on Monday?
This coming next week.
Okay. I'm not aware of anything, but I haven't really thought about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, is this just something that we sign saying that?
Just needs one signature.
Yeah, that's our agreement.
So we need to talk about that, or is that just?
We've already changed them anyway.
So I just sign it and that's it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, am I the management or the governance? The governance? Once, two signatures.
No, she said one signature.
Yeah.
Well, I'll sign it under governance, but it may, may want the treasurers as well.
You know, in some places have a manager, we don't have a manager. So if you want to front off manager, then I can sign it too.
Well, I just, I've just signed it and you say one signature and that's that'll be it? Okay. All right, thank you all for coming.
I have switched to select persons. I have switched to select persons.
Does it say that on the website?
I'm not sure what Pam's doing.
Okay, so we're now select persons?
I, I do because of Linda.
I think that's appropriate. It's time to move it.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I don't care one way or the other.
Well, I do.
Because I'm human, yeah, but it's me that's in the position, I'm human. I'm man.
All habits of you, though, but.
I'm working on it, on my end, as far as the minutes and things.
As long as we keep your passion, right?
Right.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, we'll keep your passion.
Don't worry, I will come get you.
I, oh, you did, see, I don't. I'm saving the big one for last, it's just because these are quicker.
Well, yeah, at least the ones we've already approved, this is the final the final one, after we approve the other one. Except for the table.
Oh, where's the signatures, I know this one. We've already signed this one. I'm not sure why it's there, that's the one, I don't know, could've pushed.
Well, it's, it's the second part of, oh, there it is, it's signed, but it's.
Okay, I, I saw the signatures on the, off the last page.
I don't know why there's two of them.
So axioms and. I take it the voting, well, since there were so few people.
Third.
The juniors, but the school.
We had like 86, I think, were you guys?
Well, I hope when people get that tax bill and, and think that they'll realize where it's coming from. I mean, we're gonna have to go up a few mils.
The last one.
So the attorney coming to that meeting was $102.50, I guess that's not.
No, no, I'm glad he was here.
Fire Department has a separate internet I won't bother clipping it together because you'll only clip our.
Right.
There you go. Not gonna find where I.
Yeah, there's a pink, it says.
Is it the top one?
Yeah, the first one, yeah, this shows two pages.
And meanwhile, you wanna make the motions?
I'll do that.
And my understanding is with, with two signatures, these are all okay to go forward anyway, right?
Majority.
Gordon can sign it as usual.
How come? Now, this, this check is written to Martin Salt. I thought it was New England Salt, this is written to Martin Salt. Public Works Town Road, Salt City, $1,755.
So that has to be redone.
I don't know, is it, yeah, but we don't pay him, we're not paying him now, and why are we?
We never even got a bid from Martin Salt.
Right, let me look this up and see. It says Road Salt on it, so, I mean, we're not, you know?
Well, so it's last year.
Martin Salt. Quantity.
What's the date?
They said it's an invoice, so we, we must have had them last year?
Yeah.
We did.
All right, well, then that's probably where this is.
Doesn't have any kind of date on it?
Yeah, ship date, February 11th.
Okay.
All right, so it's for last, I thought they didn't even bid last year, I thought, so that's a good thing to know.
No, it's not, it's for the.
Right, but, yeah.
They didn't bid this year.
Right, they didn't bid this year, but they did, we did have a line here. We have to make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented.
I'll second, any discussion? All those in favor, passes to O. A motion to the chairman?
I'll look.
I'll second, all in favor, thank you for, have a good week.